Hi, my name's Julie Desjarlais and I'm running for a school board position for the Wisconsin Rapids Public School District. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Wisconsin Rapids Community Media for putting this interview together. I believe that I possess the right personal qualities, work experience, and education to be a good school board member. I am a lifelong resident of Wisconsin Rapids. I earned my Bachelor of Science degree in Business Management. I have owned and operated child daycare here in my community for over 25 years. I am recently retired. I have raised five great kids who also attended the Wisconsin Rapids School District. I volunteered often in the classroom and in their extracurricular activities. I believe that gives me some insight into how things work. I know a lot of the people and I think I can use that to help as a school board member.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and Wisconsin Rapids Community Media for sponsoring this video, these video interviews, and welcome to those who are viewing them. My name is Mary Raume. I'm one of the incumbent board members on the ballot. I have learned over the years to understand the role of the school board and how to work as a team. I'm a good listener who's open-minded and always have make decisions that are best for all students. I'm a mom, grandma, and strong advocate for all students. We need a strong public education that supports all children. I look forward to sharing my views with you during these interviews. Thank you.
My name is Troy Beer. I am on the Wisconsin Rapids School Board seeking reelection. I was first elected three years ago in April 2019. It's been a, it's been a challenging couple of years, but it's important work. So I'm here today to answer some questions and, and hope to earn your vote in, in April 5th.
Good morning. I'm running for school board candidate position here in Wisconsin Rapids. My name is Mike Dearie. I'm a longtime resident here at Wisconsin Rapids. I'm a father, grandfather, a great-grandfather. I'm hardworking, I'm honest, and I have a heart to serve the children, parents, the community through the school board. Why am I seeking this position on the school board? After the better part of last year attempting to work with the present school board, I and many parents became frustrated with the lack of communication between the board and the general public. It's my desire to enable our children with the necessary skills they need to become well-rounded members of the community. Name one goal that I would want to accomplish. I hope to accomplish an engagement, a rapport with parents, teachers, staff, and community in the decision processes of our children's educational instruction. That's the key element for success. And how would I go about it? Well, here's a novel idea to think about. We need to incentivize the school board meetings by making available local merchant gift cards or a gift basket for the parents who have attended the most meetings each trimester. We need to bring people back into this equation, into these discussions. This is one possible answer.
Well, I want to first by thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum. I'm running for our students and to maintain our great schools. We have a great district here in WRPS. We have great students, we have great staff, we have staff that are willing to educate and students that are willing to learn. So we do have a terrific team on all fronts. Each day, I've fought for progress over politics and results over rhetoric, and that's so important. And that's why I'm running for reelection, because I care deeply about our students and I want them to succeed. What makes our community strong is a great school board and having great collaboration on the issues, coming to the table, and addressing the concerns. If reelected, I will advocate and support policies that put our students first and be a bridge toward their continued success in the classroom and beyond.
I'm asking for my vote, for your vote, because I care about children, families, and our community. My experience on the board and my motives for continuing are simply to make decisions that are best for all students. A major goal of mine is moving past the COVID-19 pandemic. We need to make sure that students' mental wellbeing and academic success are being addressed. We need to do everything we can to provide additional sports, supports, and opportunities to ensure their success. We hired additional staff in 2021, '22 school year to lower class sizes and provide buildings with the help they need to give students the attention they need for learning. Our SRR3 plan outlines ways our district will use these one-time resources to help our students. We also need to find ways to ensure that our staff feel appreciated and valued by listening to them and implementing their suggestions when possible. We need to be a school district that has high staff retention and one that attracts new, highly qualified staff.
I am seeking this position as a school board member because I want to serve my community and my alma mater. I'm interested in building better communication between the educators, the school board, and the parents. I want to promote community unity through better communication. The main goal I have, one of the main goals I have, is academics. I'm sure you've heard a lot recently about the academics and how Wisconsin Rapids School District isn't doing very well. When I first started attending school board meetings, I wasn't aware. All of my kids attended the district, all five. They did well. I also attended the district. I did well. I didn't realize not everybody did so well. According to the latest data, which I printed out from the Department of Public Instruction that anybody can go see themselves, the Wisconsin Rapids School District is less than proficient for the last three years and more. That's just all I have printed out. I know it's a very complicated issue. I know it's going to take a lot of cooperation from the parents, from the teachers, from the school board. We need to open up communication so everybody can help. I know that there are board members who have been in place for decades who are doing the very best they can, but at this point with these scores, we might benefit from new ideas from new people. And definitely, I think communication is key. We have to open up communication so everybody who has knowledge in all different specialties can contribute to the conversation and we can really make a difference for these kids.
It is so important for the public to voice their opinions and their concerns. If you've watched recent board meetings, that's exactly what we've been doing. We have a platform for public comment, for citizens to come before us and address their concerns. This is helpful because as an elected board member, we have a duty to listen to all viewpoints, all thoughts, all different perspectives, and to have those conversations at the table. We can have differences, but it does need to be carried out in a civil and a respectful way. The bottom line is that respect is key, and that's, that's so important because respect is, is what we need to teach our students to be good role models for the future.
I understand there are procedures in place because I have attended the school board meetings for over the last year or so. I've only spoke once, but I've heard many parents speak on a variety of topics. When I spoke, I asked the school board specifically for better communication. Three minutes prior to a meeting on an agenda topic is not enough time for anyone to truly express what they need, what they want, what they're observing, and there's no dialogue. It's like talking to a wall. It's like me talking to this camera right now pretending it's a person. We need a forum, a setup where there can be back and forth, where information can be shared, where solutions can be made. I've tried email, I've tried speaking at a school board meeting, I've listened to other parents speak. Over the last year that I've been attending, in the beginning, there was a lot of parents, a lot of community members showing up and speaking, thinking if I voice my concerns, maybe we can find solutions. Unfortunately, as many parents, and myself included, felt dismissed, not listened to, it was really frustrating. And I noticed as each month went by, as each meeting went by, less parents, less community members were attending. And I reached out to them and I said, hey, we can't give up. And they all expressed their feelings that they were wasting their time, that no problems were being solved, and they were very frustrated. And that might be where civility comes in. A few of the meetings I attended, there were some community members who may have spoke out of turn, who expressed frustration, and I don't agree with that at all. I believe that we can be civil, but if there's no communication happening, people do get frustrated. And I do have a solution for that. I'm not here to complain. I am solution-focused. There is a community where they had the same problem. This isn't just unique to Rapids. This is the state, this is the nation. A lot of this is happening everywhere. So in Wisconsin, the Cedarburg School District had a similar problem and came up with a solution. In January, they had their very first meeting where community members could show up, they used their PAC Center, just like we have a PAC Center. The school board was there, all the teachers and administrators, anybody who wanted to go, the parents, the community members, and they got to have a conversation. Eleven speakers showed up at the first meeting. They were expressive, they felt listened to, there was discourse, there were people asked questions, and the administrators and people in charge were able to answer the questions. And, and solutions can be made that way, and that's the only way. A relationship between a school and a community is only as good as their communication.
I fully support procedures in place for the public to have input at school board meetings. These are meetings held for the board to conduct our business. They allow public input on topics the board is meeting at, at that meeting. The board then can take commentary into consideration when we make that decision. We follow the guidelines of the Speak Your Peace Initiative to treat one another with respect and dignity, even if opinions differ on a topic. If the board doesn't vote the way individuals who show up for public comment want, it doesn't mean they didn't hear what they had to say. It just means the majority on the board do not agree with the opposing perspective. During my years on the board, we've had different chances for the public to be heard, which included focus groups, listening sessions, and also feedback forums to get the public's input on different topics, such as restructuring our elementary schools and superintendent search and our referendums. Throughout my years of service on the board, we have never been accused by the public of not having opportunities for input. Thank you.
Well, the procedures that are in place right now are not conducive to address the concerns brought before them. You're only able to speak three minutes at a school board meeting and only on agenda items. This does not answer public concerns. There needs to be time to address issues and concerns brought at the time of the meeting by the concerned parties and not just school board items. And how can I, how can civility be encouraged at this meetings? Respect garners respect. From my experience going to the school board meetings, the board tells the public that they want parent involvement and input, but when parents go and try to speak, the board has been dismissive, which equals disrespect and fosters frustration and anger with the parents towards the board. There is a great lack of discourse from the board to the public. Again, I have to answer that with no, it's not. In regard to the ability the parents to opt out of certain books, it is a step in the right direction, but it doesn't go far enough. All instructional material of any format should be sent to every parent to view and make decisions on. They're the parents, they should have the final say. And those within the community should be made aware of what is being taught also at all grade levels.
Our school district takes an entirely transparent approach in adopting and revising overall curriculum. The great thing to note is the increased parent and the increased community involvement in the overall process. The development process is open, the process is public, and, and we welcome people to come on in and give their insight. It's so important. A lot of thought, a lot of planning, and a lot of access is, is exactly how this becomes transparent and what makes the process work. The process being open and the process being accessible is what we've been doing for years, and that's what exactly we continue to do going forward as new curriculum is adopted and revised. And despite the recent rhetoric that's out there, here at WRPS, it is entirely transparent process when we adopt and revise curriculum. And it's public, it's open, and, and all insight is welcome.
I am aware that the school district does have a policy where parents can opt out of reading certain books if they don't approve, but not all parents are aware of that. Over the last year, I've been doing a lot of investigating and research on the school district, the policies, what works, what doesn't work, because I'm incredibly passionate about making things better. I do realize that if a parent doesn't know they can opt out, odds are, they're not going to opt out. There's no way to know what is being taught in many of our curriculum. The most recent study done just last week, asking communities, 84% of voters believe parents have a right to see the curriculum being taught to their kids. Currently, there's very little of the curriculum online that's accessible to parents, if they even know where to look. I think if parents knew what was being taught, they would be able to say whether they agree with it or not. And it's not just one book, it's the curriculum overall. I know that there's a lot of talk about critical race theory, about the sex ed program. A lot of the parents have no idea what's going on, and when there's a lack of information, people are distrustful, people are fearful, and you can't blame them. If we don't put everything upfront and have it transparent, people are left to wonder and question, and that's terrible. I think if we could make our curriculum transparent, allow everybody to see what's available, it wouldn't be that hard to put it online. Some of it already is, the 4K program, some of the math stuff. I think we need much better communication, again, and that would solve a lot of these problems. I think if the school district made a good faith effort to provide transparency, the parents and the community would be very appreciative.
Parents have various ways to address curriculum-related concerns. The opt-out process is one way, and another way is to speak with your child's teacher or the building principal to have your concerns addressed. Parents can also review content curriculum as posted on our district website. Also, during the district acquisition process, parents are invited to an open house to review materials and provide feedback on the curriculum being considered for purchase. The district CII Committee, which is the Curriculum Instructional Improvement Committee, is also structured to include three parent reps whose three-year term runs from September through May, with the four meetings per year. Yes, four meetings per year they are. The applications are usually posted in August. This information is posted on the district website and on Facebook. Yes, SRR dollars we are using will help support students hit by the pandemic. At the February board meeting, the board approved the proposed SRR3 plan, which details how the funds will be spent. The plan can be found on the WRPS website for anyone interested in reviewing it. Most of the funding will be spent on personnel working directly with students. Continuing to make, maintain lower class sizes for the next two years at the elementary level and providing support for students' engagement is a large focus for the, the SRR funding. 20% of the funding must be used to implement evidence-based internet intervention strategies to meet student academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs. The plan includes a focus on supports for children from low-income families, children with disabilities, English learners, migrant students, and students experiencing homelessness or living in foster care who may have disproportionately been impacted by COVID-19. The plan also includes a before-school program for families by partnering with local organizations.
The monies in, in regard to the SRR3 funds have, have been spent on additional teachers, staff, and vehicles to bring children to school who can't make it on their own, just to name a few. There are redundancies built into this spending plan that needs to be addressed. My concern is this, what do we do after three years when we have a financial obligation set before us? Where will the money come from? Will the school system burden the taxpayers further? I don't believe the input from the, from the public was wholeheartedly sought on how to use the SRR3 funds.
Our district is looking at many ways to grow and, and strengthen certain areas with, with these federal dollars. We're looking to hire a support staff to address overall learning needs in the classroom. That's a crucial component. We're looking to decrease class sizes with the goal of making classes more, more targeted, more efficient with that one-on-one ratio, so students really get that, really get that drive to learn and, and the best learning possible. We're also looking at providing a vehicle for buildings to eliminate any transportation barriers that may arise. Continue to establish an early learning, three-year-old and 4K center for our students. We are looking at increasing technology resources. That's extremely important in the modern age to have the, the best technology for our students to learn. So we're looking at increasing technology resources and also providing therapy services for our students and our staff. It's extremely important. And we have some great local groups in the area. We're looking to strengthen our relationship and collaborate with our Boys and Girls Club. They do important work for us and, and our students and the community at whole. So we're looking to, to further collaborate and, and look at ways that that can take place. More directly in the classroom, we're looking to hire aides and to address overall learning needs for, for the students, for them to grow. We're also looking at hiring a data manager to see how we can maximize areas to, to really have the best district possible, to have the best learning possible, because that's what it's all about at the end of the day. So there are many different approaches, many different things we're looking at in, in terms of how to most effectively use these federal dollars. Because at the end of the day, it's, it's about putting the students first and, and making sure that they can get ahead in the best way possible.
That's a lot of money, and this is part three. SRR1, SRR2, this is now SRR3. I can't imagine trying to figure out how to spend $7 million, but there's 11 pages here of a draft that the parties involved have put together. It's available online. Part of the SRR3 formula grant eligibility, the district had to allow for input from the community. I recently became aware of that. I shared it with everyone I could think of to please look at all of these pages. But unless you have been on some part of the school board or an educator or an administrator, this is gobbledegoo. It's like trying to do IRS things. So I did my very best to read through it with my amateur knowledge, and I saw a lot of areas of redundancy where maybe there's a better way to spend the money. There's a lot of administrative things happening. The parents I talked to and the teachers I've talked to, even the cafeteria workers I've talked to, the teachers get this much, they have frontline access to the kids. They're the ones who help the kids. I think their input should be number one. The teachers and the parents spend the most time with the kids. They can tell you where the money should be spent. I know there's a huge shortage of teachers. I know there's a huge shortage of substitutes, and that's not just unique to Rapids, that's across the nation. I think if we ask the teachers, do you have a supportive, encouraging environment to work in? What can we do to fix that? Are you making competitive wages? That's what we should be looking at. Obviously, if we can pay adequately competitively, if we can provide the support they need, there's so many areas where that could be helped. And I think the teachers and the parents have a right to be listened to. I know there's a little link from the 7th through the 28th where you could submit your information, your concerns. I don't know how much weight that holds. So, when I look through this, again, um, they mentioned a school, each school needs their own vehicle for transportation should a student not be able to get to school. Well, as a parent, I don't think that's a great idea. I think it's a parent's responsibility to get the child out of school, out of bed, ready for school, and make arrangements for transportation. I understand not everybody is in a position where they can do that. I don't think buying each school a vehicle to do a student Uber service is a good idea or a good allocation of funds. I think we have a great busing system. I know a lot of school districts that bus for anyone. I know in Mequon, for example, if you live a block away, you can sign up for the busing service. Every child should be eligible for busing. We have a great system. The companies here in town do a great job. They're very efficient, effective. I would much rather see our busing expanded than a separate vehicle for every school. That would be a much better spending of money. Again, the interventionist, when you look at how money has been spent, our school district enrollment is a little bit less every year. That's why you see schools closing. With less kids, yet more money, you have to wonder, is money really the answer? $7 million, holy cow. We need to find the people who have the answers. I don't think these are the right answers. I think we need better input from people who have better knowledge. I spoke with a lovely woman who was in charge of fixing schools. That was her job, her entire life. They sent her into areas where schools were terrible. She went in as a businessperson. She said, okay, where are the strengths? Where are the weaknesses? Where's the bloat in the budget? Where can we trim? And she turned schools around. I was blessed to have her come into my life and we could discuss these things. I think those are the people we need to reach out to. There are so many experts in every avenue. We're a small town. We've had the same people on the school board for decades. They haven't accomplished what needs to be done. Decades worth of children, less than half proficient in needing reading and math, less than half, for years. Something needs to change. Again, I don't mean to complain. I'm not trying to be a mean person. I'm not trying to point fingers or blame any particular person. I'm saying we have problems that need to be addressed. I am willing to listen to any expert in the field, any parent, any teacher, to come up with the solutions we need. I am willing to humble myself and be told when I'm wrong. Please, reach out, let's work together as a community, because that's the only way we can make solutions to the situation.
Why should voters choose me as the next school board member? I believe that fresh ideas and input are necessary to move our district in the right direction. I have always been a self-starter. I'm open to thoughts and concerns from the public and students and teachers. We have to work together to make Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools the very best for all. My heart is in this for our children. They are our future. Thank you for allowing me to express my thoughts and views with you today. Good day.
During my tenure on the board, I have gained much knowledge and understanding about how the educational system works. Every student matters, and this will continue to be my focus if I am fortunate enough to be elected to another term. I know the importance of having a board that works well together, even when differences in opinions exist. I support civil discourse and treating others with respect. I understand the need to be fiscally responsible to our taxpayers by using the funds they entrust us with well. I care about our community, and having a strong educational system in place makes our community stronger. I keep current with issues facing education and have the experience to make difficult and sometimes unpopular decisions. I appreciate our parents and school families and want to continue doing what I can to help and support them. Our students are our future. Our staff is our strength. And if I am reelected, I will continue to make the best decisions possible to maintain a strong educational system that thrives even in adversity.
So the answer to that is simple. Just follow the results, follow what we have been doing as a school board. Now, I've been on the board for three years. This is my first time up for reelection, but just to name a few, our school board has done tremendous things for our community. We have improved and enhanced our schools and facilities, and you see that right now as you drive around our district, all the great construction taking place, all the great improvements that are on the horizon for, for making our students and our buildings safer. We have increased parent and community involvement in the curriculum development process. That's extremely important. We have ensured school safety and security across all buildings. We have expanded access to vocational education and overall careers. We have updated access to technology in all of our buildings. We have maximized student opportunities in the visual and performing arts, in athletics, and in volunteer opportunities, also in college and career preparation and readiness. So as a school board, we have continued to do great things for our community and, and to make sure our students succeed. make sure our students succeed. In closing, I am an effective board member because I am nonpartisan. I care about helping our kids. I'm not running to advance a political agenda. Since day one, I have fought for actual results over rhetoric that we're hearing right now. I have fought for actual progress over politics that we've also been hearing. I would appreciate your support on Tuesday, April 5th, because our students deserve a champion that will fight for them, that will put their interests first, and that wants them to succeed and has that drive to learn. So I thank you.
I would like to think that the voters would choose me because I have the personal qualities, the work experience, and the education to be a school board member. I really want to bring the necessary change to make our schools better. I'm willing to work with the community as a whole, with the administration, with the central office, with the teachers, with the parents. I want everybody involved. That's the only way we're going to make the changes that we need to make. I'm focused and determined. I am passionate about helping children. I feel that's been my calling my whole life. That's why I did daycare for over 25 years. I'm now blessed with beautiful grandchildren that I get to spend time with, who I want to get the best education possible, along with every child in our community. And I think if you are kind enough to vote for me, I pledge to do that for you.